Okay, good afternoon, everybody. Looks like we still have a pretty, uh, pretty busy waiting room. So I'm going to give it just another, another couple of moments. Okay, well, go ahead and get started. Thank you, Matt, for continuing to monitor the waiting room here. Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for joining us. My name is Kathy Boyce, GridWorks Director for the Interior West, and I'm joined today by my colleagues Steve Black and Matt Jones. If you wanted to say hi. We will be providing facilitation support for today's meeting. This is a study session for the Colorado Electric Transmission Authority. We are here to introduce a framework for prioritizing transmission projects that CETA may advance for further consideration. So in essence, today, we're proposing a systematic methodology for shortlisting best-fit transmission projects to proceed to further due diligence. So today, we hope to answer questions about this methodology, provide clarifications, and offer a written comment period for more substantive feedback after reflecting on today's introduction. We are both recording this meeting and will be posting the slides on the CETA website shortly. So know that both of these will be publicly available soon. And with that, Matt, if I could ask you to launch the slides. So our agenda today, Matt, if I could go one forward. We're, I'm going to hand it shortly over to Maury Galbraith, CETA's Executive Director. He will introduce the prioritization criteria and explain some of the rationale and the thinking that went into it. We're actually going to weave together that with a technical analysis. And Keegan, Keegan Moyer is here from Energy Strategies to walk through some of the technical analysis that will support and inform the prioritization work. And then we've set aside some time for the seat of board members to ask their questions and have a chance to offer their initial reactions. And then we'll open up the floor to stakeholders and likewise, ask your questions, see clarifications, and any initial reactions that you want to offer. And then I'll wrap us up for the last few minutes before 3 o'clock. So to reiterate, our purpose today is to introduce the proposed prioritization criteria, answer your questions, and get initial reactions. So for now, I will ask folks to keep themselves muted, and we will invite speakers at different points throughout the session. And with that, I'll hand it over to you, Maury.
Thank you, Kathy. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Maury Galbraith. I'm the Executive Director of the Colorado Electric Transmission Authority. It's good to see a lot of familiar faces on the webinar today. I thank you for your time, and I thank you in advance for your input on these criteria and prioritization factors. We're really excited to get started with this. So if Matt, I could get you to go to the next slide. So as I think most of you are aware, CETA completed its first transmission study, the 2024 Transmission Capacity Expansion Study in January of this year, and presented the results to the General Assembly. There is an awful lot of needed transmission investment in the state. If you're totaling up, our, our reference case portfolio in that study is recommending $4.5 billion of transmission investment over the next 20 years. So there's an awful lot of projects, there's an awful lot of line miles, and there's an awful lot of dollars on the table for needed transmission. CETA needs a, a clear and structured methodology to screen and evaluate all of those projects and, and ultimately find projects that are a good fit for CETA and that also benefit the state of Colorado. So that's what brings us here today. We are going to share a two-stage filtering and prioritization methodology with everyone today. We're, we're seeking input on, on the evaluation criteria. Do the criteria cause anyone to have concerns? Are there any showstoppers in there? We're also looking for people to provide input on, did we miss anything? Are there any criteria or factors that we may have missed and we should include in our prioritization methodology? So ultimately, what happens here is, is that we prioritize and rank projects that are in our 2024 transmission study. And later this year, I will submit a, a, a final ranking to the CETA Board of Directors. It's up to the CETA Board of Directors to use their knowledge and expertise to determine which projects are going to make that best-fit shortlist. So the ranking is not the decision. The ranking is, is analysis and input that decision-makers use to come up with that, that best-fit shortlist of transmission projects that will advance to sort of further due diligence by CETA. So that's, that's where we're at, sort of in a nutshell. The next slide, Matt, if I could get you to go there, sort of summarizes the stages. So I mentioned that there's a two-stage process for filtering and ranking projects. If you move from left to right on this slide, we start with a significant number of projects. We're going to share some information about the total number of projects later in the presentation. But we start with a significant number of projects. We are going to run it through a two-stage filtering process. The, the first stage has some pass/fail criteria that, that projects need to pass to move on to stage two. So it's a, it's a filtering exercise that removes projects that, that don't pass those critical factors. Once we get to stage two, we're going to score each individual project based on a, a list of factors, based on a list of criteria. And then ultimately, we're going to create an aggregate total score for each project that's going to result in a ranking of projects. Higher scores are more favorable, lower scores less favorable. Like I said, we're going to pass a, a ranked list of projects to the CETA Board of Directors. I will, I will summarize the ranking in a memo and submit that to the CETA Board of Directors. And then they will use their professional judgment and expertise to determine sort of where to draw the line, right? We need a, a shortlist of projects. I'm thinking something along the lines of three to five projects. But we're going to look for sort of natural breakpoints in the, in the ranking. And, you know, maybe, maybe they draw the line between the sixth and seventh project. Maybe they draw the line between the third and fourth project. But that's, that's where the Board of Directors exercise their judgment and select that best-fit shortlist of projects that we're going to submit to further due diligence. So that's where we're headed. I hope that visualization helps. We're here today to talk about the two boxes that are in blue. The initial screening phase and then the detailed scoring and ranking stage. So Matt, if I could get you to go to the next slide. Let's talk about that initial screening. So again, I said, we're going to submit, we're going to, all projects are going to be scored in this initial stage on a pass/fail criteria. So the idea here is, is that if a project fails to meet any one of these four criteria, then they do not pass and do not move on to the second stage. So let's walk through what some of these further, what, what some of these initial criteria are. So one, we're looking for projects that have alignment with CETA's statutory requirements. Does the project clearly meet at least one of CETA's statutory objectives? You know, improving grid reliability, helping Colorado meet its clean energy goals, furthering economic or community development? If the project checks one of those boxes, then, then it's a pass on statutory alignment. We're also looking for projects that are technically feasible, right? Does the project face any known insurmountable technical or engineering barriers that would just be very difficult for CETA to, to handle? Or does it require unproven technologies that, that just make it not a good fit for CETA? So again, if the, the answer is, is that there are insurmountable barriers or that there are unproven technologies, that project would fail and would not be passed on to the, to the second stage. We're also looking for geographic relevance. We're, we're proposing that, that any transmission project have at least one terminus within the state of Colorado. I think making sure that projects benefit Colorado should be a priority. And so we're proposing that at least one terminus reside within the state of Colorado. If the answer is yes, then it's pass. If the answer is no, then it's fail. We also think it's really important to look at strategic fit. Does the project address gaps that utilities or markets are not likely to resolve on their own, right? Are these, we're looking for transmission projects that are sort of a best fit for CETA, that, that others struggle to develop. And so, so if, you know, if the projects are ones that are a good fit for CETA, then it passes and moves forward. If it's a bad strategic fit, if we know for certain, for example, that a utility is likely to build the project or that it's, an example might be a reconductoring project that is solely within one utility service territory, right? The utility is likely to take on that effort and not need CETA's help. So again, we're looking for strategic fit. If there is a strategic fit for CETA, pass, move on to the next stage. If not, fail and fall out of the, fall out of the ranking. So I think I was supposed to pause maybe in between each of those numbers and, and ask for Keegan and the team at Energy Strategies to provide some color commentary. Keegan, I know you've got some thoughts on, on some of these. Why don't we, why don't we have you chime in now?
I know you did a good job, Maury. I was going to give some examples, and you already gave some, but I can offer a few more. So in thinking about these screens, we, we helped Maury and the GridWorks team behind the scene kind of think through what might make sense here, some of our thinking that went into it. You know, the statutory alignment, that's pretty simple application. Most projects are going to meet one of those three things. It's kind of hard to, to not. There could be some exceptions to that. But a lot of facilities that are going to be considered here would probably fall into one of those buckets, one way, shape, or form. There's, there's, I think, more likelihood of a project not meeting one of the following three screens. The second screen with technical feasibility. The reason we included this is that we, we thought about the purpose of CETA, the way it's structured, and the timelines that it wants to see projects completed and supported under. And the organization doesn't have, for example, at least in our opinion, you know, 10 or 15 years to hang around and kind of hope a major revolutionary, not evolutionary, but revolutionary technology comes through or project concept comes through. It's, it's not a great fit for the organization. So here, we kind of screen that for technical feasibility. This could also catch a few other things that maybe might tie CETA up. It's got limited resources and time. They also have limited resources and time to do the screening. So for example, you know, Colorado doesn't have any 500-kV infrastructure, nor does it have any 765-kV in, infrastructure. Those are, for example, engineering barriers that projects like that may make sense to screen out. You know, if there's, if there's reason to do so. Another factor would be an unproven technology. To clarify, we're not talking about, you know, high-capacity conductors that are in service and available. You could buy them now, right? That's not what we're talking about. We're talking about effectively research projects, things that aren't actually applied in industry. You know, CETA probably isn't the organization to make a bet on one of those. So that's the intent of that technical feasibility screen. The geographic relevance, I think, is op, is, is pretty obvious. One could argue that a pass-through project, such as a, you know, a DC line that passes through Colorado territory, but doesn't interconnect to Colorado, can any Colorado has some way to benefit from that? All that may be true. It may not be the best place for CETA to spend its efforts. You know, this grid connectivity requirement, we thought was reasonable, where we'd have one terminus within the state, at least to start. You can envision CETA building a portfolio of projects over time, where maybe in the future, it would have, you know, projects in neighboring states that it would endorse, perhaps, or otherwise get involved with. It's hard to see that being the first thing the CETA does. And then finally, with this strategic fit, first of all, the, the board, I think rightly so, would have a lot of ability to interpret what this means. But we did have some thinking in that CETA's, you know, set up there to be, I don't know if developer of last resort is, is a good word. That probably isn't the right statutory language, but it's there for a reason. And the reason isn't to circumvent or jump in front of or try to compete against the incumbent utilities in the state. And that's really the main thing here is like, is this a project that would be special in some way or unique that otherwise might not occur but for CETA's involvement? So that's, that's the way that we're thinking around that. Some examples, you know, a very classical status quo generation, you know, or a reconductoring project that is entirely within a utility service territory, probably not the best focus for CETA. Another one might be, you know, a generation tie line, you know, the economics of the generation and that there's the processes for that to go forward in, that, that probably also would make for CETA to get involved with. So those are the initial screens. And the goal of those, as Maury said, is to just kind of screen down the scope of the analysis for the second stage. So not trying to set the bar overly high because we don't want to screen everything out, but we want to have some barrier to entry, I think. So back to you, Maury.
Thank you, Keegan. Yeah, so stage one is a, is a filtering stage where we filter out infeasible or, you know, non-relevant projects. And then we pass all the other projects through and we move on to the second stage. So if I can get you to move one for, slide forward, Matt, we'll start talking about the second stage. So now, in the second stage, we are going to rank each of the projects that make it to this stage on, on 10 factors. So we've got 10 factors. We've, we've put them into two categories, statutory factors and other factors. On each of the 10 factors, we're going to score the project using a, a high, medium, low, and poor ranking. So high projects get a score of three, medium projects get a score of two, low projects get a score of one, and poor projects get a score of zero. So we're going to, we're going to quantitatively rank each project on these 10 factors. So let me dive into the 10 factors and talk a little bit about them. And then we'll, we'll have an example of all of this later in the presentation. So first, we're going to focus on those statutory factors again. And we're going to score each project on, on how well they satisfy these statutory requirements. One is, the first factor is grid reliability. Does the project significantly address known reliability needs or substantially enhance quality of service for customers? When we think about grid reliability here, we're thinking about the reliability of the bulk electric system. We're thinking of reliability in terms of NERC standards and bulk electric system performance. So this is not, you know, this is not, for example, resource adequacy. We'll get to where we think resource adequacy fits in later, but this is, this is the reliability of the, the bulk electric system. The second statutory factor is clean energy goals. Does the project directly facilitate the integration of clean or renewable energy resources, helping Colorado achieve those statutory clean energy goals? There's, there's some projects that are going to do a better job of, of helping move renewable energy into needed load centers. And so projects, you know, can score higher or lower on, on this category. We're going to, we're going to also look at economic and community development. Will the project contribute meaningfully to the economic growth of the community or the local area, right? And, and I think the key word here is meaningful, right? There's, there's certain projects that really make a big difference in rural Colorado that, you know, if they were situated in urban Colorado, probably wouldn't make a big, big difference in terms of economic development or community development. So we're going to really be looking at, does it make a meaningful impact in the community where it is proposed to be cited? We're also going to score projects on the efficient use of existing transmission assets and alternatives, right? So projects that use existing rights-of-way or that incorporate advanced transmission technologies or storage alternatives are going to score higher. Projects that, you know, are breaking greenfield development probably score lower in this category. But again, we're scoring all of the, all the projects on the, on the high, medium, low, or scale. And so we're starting with these statutory factors. Keegan, before I move on to the next slide, did I, did I do a good job there? Or do you want to weigh in a little bit on maybe grid reliability and, and economic community development?
Yes, sure. So on, on grid, grid reliability, we did draw a narrow scope, I think, just based off our interpretation of what was intended from the statute around CETA. And so that does focus on transmission-level reliability. The other issues we capture elsewhere, as Maury mentioned. So that's important to understand, meaning that if a project doesn't, you know, help to mitigate or address a, a known violation or if it's a purely hypothetical impact to improving reliability, then it probably wouldn't score well here. But it is true that most transmission infrastructure, if networked in some way, shape, or form, generally does enhance reliability marginally. So I'd expect a few low scores here. Onto the economic and community development. The word to emphasize here is meaningful, meaningfully. So that was put in there on purpose. I think it's, you know, true from a state macro perspective that just if you look at exclusively at the development of a line, whether it be in eastern Colorado or western Colorado, the impact to say, you know, state GDP is roughly the same, right? But what we're actually trying to find here is something more local. So for example, if this line is built, does it open up renewable development opportunity in a community where that would have a material impact on the economic prospects and growth in that particular area, right? And that's going to really depend on the geography that we're talking around about. Some of the rural areas of Colorado, that's probably going to score better on that front. You know, another line looping around, for example, the Denver metro area, you know, doesn't really meaningfully contribute to economic development, you know, in that local area. It kind of helps the system in general, but it's not like a community on the outskirts of Denver is begging for a line nearby for their economic prospects. So that was the intent of, of, of that one, is to try to capture some of those local components. Before we go further, I'll just say that in applying these factors, you'll see as we go, some of them are going to be pretty qualitative, you know, in how you would actually develop a scoring, and some of them are going to be quantitative. And so I'll try to kind of point that out. I think for the most part, what we're looking at here is likely going to be qualitative analysis, you know, directional conclusions about Project A is better than Project B for these reasons. Whereas later on, we'll get to some more metrics that are more quantitative in nature. Back to you, Maury.
Yeah, thank you, Keegan. That was great. So Roger, we do have time later for questions, but if you've got a question about one of these statutory factors, you can, you can chime in now.
Oh, thanks. Sorry, I, my connection was bad and I'm late. But I don't know if the board members made any statements, but I'm certainly Roger Freeman, board member, incredibly excited that we're turning to this, this next stage. My question on statutory factors was, was there any thought to giving them more weight, given the statutory nature? I'm not saying we should do that, but maybe that's something you'll address later. But before we leave the statutory factors, I just wondered if that had been part of the discussion. And if that question's better kept for later, that's fine, too. Thank you.
Thanks, Roger. Yeah, and, and like I said, we're going to have some facilitated discussion with the board members here in a moment. We're also going to have an opportunity for stakeholders to chime in. We did not consider giving the statutory factors extra weight. We, we have sort of used them in two different places. So we used statutory factors in, in stage one, which is the initial filtering of projects. And then we're using them again here in stage two. So in a sense, they are getting more emphasis than other factors, but we haven't given them explicitly more weight in this stage two. So when we go, oh, go ahead.
Maury, I was just going to add, you know, by the fact that we broke them out individually, we kind of do imply that the statutory factor does get really kind of a 3X credit. So to the extent a project met all of these, Roger, it would kind of overly weight it towards this versus another factor that was singular in its nature. So it does kind of do that implicitly.
Yeah, I think so. Yeah, that's right. So that's, that's the statutory factors in, in stage two. Again, we're going to, we're going to score each project on each of those four factors. And then we have an additional six factors that are in our other category. And Matt, so if you go ahead one slide, we'll start talking about some of these. So we've got, I'll, I'll just jump in and try and explain some of these factors. So we thought cost effectiveness would be an important factor. What we're thinking of here is, does the transmission project unlock an amount of sort of renewable deliverability at an effective cost, right? You can think of, you know, unlocking megawatts per dollar spent on transmission. And projects that do a good job of unlocking large quantities of, of, you know, renewable development or renewable energy at a relatively low price will score higher. Projects that unlock, you know, fewer megawatts or even the same amount of megawatts at a higher cost will sort of drop further down the list. So cost effectiveness is, is a port, is an important factor, an important thing to rank projects on. We've also included a system connectivity factor here. This is really a question of whether or not the transmission project is going to enhance flows between utility service territories, between renewable-rich regions, you know, diverse renewable zones, and whether or not it's going to make interconnections between market centers and Colorado. These are all important things if you're thinking about resource adequacy, right? And if you're looking at resource adequacy from a transmission perspective, you're really interested in being able to provide optionality for system operators to bring in power from a diverse set of locations so that, so that they're able to respond to system risks. And so building out a, a system that has diverse interconnectivity is really important. And so this is where we think, from a transmission perspective, resource adequacy sort of comes into all of this, as well as economics. So system connectivity is important. We've included a citing and permitting factor. Is it, you know, is the citing and permitting relatively manageable or is it sort of insurmountable? And so rank, rank projects on how complex and complicated the citing and permitting may be. And then we've also included a factor on commercial viability. Is this project going to be something that is attractive to commercial interests? Is CETA going to be able to find a willing partner to, to team up with us to help design, develop, and construct these projects? So commercial viability is important. Before I move on to the next two factors on the next slide, Keegan, I want to give you an opportunity to weigh in on some of these factors as well.
Sure. Hopefully, this tech team approach is working, Maury, but we'll just, we'll just keep going with it. On the cost effectiveness front and the way to apply that, it's, it's really going to depend on the amount of information available at the time. So we thought about in developing these screens and ranks to make them durable for some portion of time, right? We're going to apply them to projects from the 2024 CETA Transmission Expansion Study. But it's also true that CETA could apply them to other projects in the future. And so, you know, at that time, there could be different metrics. In the near term, this cost effectiveness approach is really going to be kind of an estimate of really the capability of the line divided by the cost. From an engineering perspective, there are other measures and probably more detailed technical measured of, you know, increased grid injection capability and all, all these things that we didn't study every, individually for every line in CETA. So there is going to be some approximations made here, but this will be more technical in nature relative to some of the other ones. System connectivity, I think you explained that one well, Maury. I'll just skip that one. Citing and permitting, you know, this considers those challenges as well as just impacts to environmentally sensitive areas or complex to environmentally sensitive areas or complexity of the development. In the case of the CETA 2024 Capacity Expansion or Transmission Expansion Study, we do have, though we didn't publish all of it because it wasn't really germane at the time, it was more of a modeling input. We do have a lot of insight about the lines we identified and their environmental attributes. So how, how many road crossings and river crossings and railroad crossings? And what type of terrain do they go through? All these pretty quantitative metrics, I think for this iteration, we'll probably try to use some of that. But in future iterations, you also can't expect that'll always be the case. So this one will have to be flexible, I think, in CETA goes forward. So those are the two that I think I'll comment on in this one. Maury, pass it back to you and we can keep on moving.
All right. So we've got two more of these additional factors on the next slide. The first one is, does the project have political or institutional support within the state of Colorado, right? Are utilities in favor of this project? Is the, the governor and his team in faith, you know, in support of these projects? And, and critically, our local governments, our local county commissions, local communities, local governments in support of the project. Projects with, you know, political support and institutional support score higher. Projects where there's, where there's known opposition or a lack of support score lower. We've also got the, the 10th factor here is the constructibility and implementation feasibility of the project. Is it something that, again, as Keegan was saying earlier, is realistically constructible in a relatively short timeframe, right? CETA is, you know, a, a startup organization. We're, we're trying to achieve early success. Will the project allow CETA to sort of achieve early success on a reasonable timeframe? As opposed to having, you know, getting bogged down in a project that takes 15 to 20 years to develop? And that leaves an awful lot of time for people to question, you know, whether CETA is, you know, worth the effort or not. And so we're looking for, you know, projects that have some sort of ability to achieve early success here, I think. Keegan, anything on either of those two?
No, I think you covered those well.
All right. So that's the, that's the second stage. Those are the 10 factors in the second stage. Again, we're going to score each of them on high, medium, low and poor. If you move to the next slide, you're going to see those, 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 those ranking score criteria. We will aggregate the, the scores on those 10 factors for each project, come up with a total aggregate project score. Projects with higher scores move to the top, projects with lower scores move to the bottom. So that's the, that's the approach. That's the methodology that we're proposing. Again, we're, we're really interested in knowing if there's anything in there that causes anyone concern. Have we gotten anything wrong? We're also interested in, did we miss any factors? Is there any other factors that we should add to the list? But when you move to the next slide, Matt, you will see a, a hypothetical ranking that, that sort of walks through this methodology. So at the top of the slide, you see the stage one process where we're filtering out projects that do not pass those initial screens. And then on the bottom half of the slide, you see stage two, where projects are getting a score on the, on the 10 factors. The score is being aggregated over there in the far right column where you see stage two score. Projects with higher scores move up, projects with lower scores move down. Again, this, this ranking is something that we will provide to the CETA board and they will sort of draw the line between, you know, projects that make the shortlist and projects that fail to make the shortlist. But Keegan, do you want to take some time going a little bit deeper into this and explaining how you put this together?
Sure. This, I mean, in the tent here is just to show kind of what to expect, I guess, in a loose format. This will evolve as we do it. But this first chart at the top says stage one shows how the screening would be applied to these handful of hypothetical projects. You can see project A and B. A doesn't pass the strategic fit screen on the basis of it being kind of a single system reconductoring project. So we'll say that would, that would fail. And then the transmission with no Colorado termination, but also failed the screen. But then really it's a low bar of the wise. And so the remaining projects pass those projects then would move down below and be scored. And see the scoring approach that Maury just showed you kind of zero to three. There's no zeros here, but some of these score lower than others. So we have a project that would be, you know, renewable access and local reliability, a project that would enhance utility capacity with a new inner tie. It's kind of a new interconnection between two systems and then a major interstate upgrade, right? So you can see how we scored these, it's hypothetical, so I'm not really going to go with them. But this would be, I think, probably a summary. When we really do this and start to show this, I think we try to probably share a little bit of the logic, you know, on, on why the scores would be the way they would, so it didn't look like entirely a black box. So there would be some documentation behind this, but the goal is to really identify clusters. So this, hopefully what you're getting from what Maury's presented so far is this is, you know, a screen, a rank. It doesn't mean the project that comes out with 27 points and one's 26. You know, number 20, the one with 27 is definitively better than 26 for CETA. That's not the intent of this. There's certainly art here and there's certainly some subjectivity here. What we're actually trying to find is just groupings of projects that rise to the top. So in this case, you could say, okay, well, these two, you know, have comparable scores. And we actually do it, maybe it'll be five or six or three or 10. They'll all be kind of similarly positioned. I think practically you can assume the lowest ranking project in that cluster is just as viable as the highest ranking project in that cluster. And there needs to be some discretion by the board on which ones to pursue. So that's the intent, isn't to try to like be overly precise with this, right? And, and that's just, I think, the reality is that, that the other way to do this type of work is you go do a benefit cost study on every project and get a definitive economic answer, you know, on every single one. And, and that's not what CETA is trying to do here, right? We're, we're trying to do more a cursory approach one that could be applied, essentially without any consulting report and could just be done by a quasi layman. So that's all I got to say here, Maury. Back to you.
All right. Thanks, Keegan. Appreciate it. So the next slide shows a, a summary of the projects that are in the CETA 2024 Transmission Capacity Expansion Study. These are the projects that we're going to be putting into this two-stage filtering and, and ranking process. We've got seven projects that are in the reference case portfolio that are greenfield projects. We've got nine projects that are in that reference case portfolio that are rebuilding, you know, existing lines. We've got some, some conceptual scenarios that we, that we ran in the study. We've got 15 projects in that conceptual alternative category. We've got some scenarios that looked at interstate connectivity. We've got four projects that you'll recall from the study that connect Colorado to neighboring states, and so they're in the mix. We've got a high demand scenario in the CETA study that, that resulted in about in a, so I, I think in the reference case portfolio, we were right around 14.5 gigawatts of new renewable development over the next 20 years. I think the high demand scenario increased that by roughly an additional seven gigawatts of renewable energy, seven or eight, I can't remember the exact number. So that high demand scenario results in an awful lot of new lines popping up as being needed in that 20-year study. A lot of those lines tend to be on the, the western slope of Colorado. So we've got eight, eight lines there to add to the, the scoring methodology here. And then we had a couple SPP integration scenarios that we need to consider in all of this. So, so those are the projects in the study that will be evaluated using this two-stage approach. If you go to the next slide, Matt, you'll see just a summary of, of what we, what we went over today. We're going to be using this, this filtering and ranking methodology to score projects. Ultimately, I will write a memorandum to the board of directors that describes the, the scoring and ranking and presents them with an overall, overall list of projects, you know, sorted in, in rank order. It's really up to the CETA board of directors to take that input and figure out which projects make the best fit shortlist and which ones don't. And again, the idea here is, is that projects that are on that final best fit shortlist are projects that CETA will, you know, explore partnership opportunities with developers on and do further due diligence on those projects as we move forward. So that's, that's where we're headed here, folks. If you go to the next slide, I think you'll see some, some further dates in, in this process. Kathy, do you want me to cover this or is this something that you were going to take?
We can, either way, Maury, and we'll certainly come back to it at the end here.
Yeah, I think the important thing to emphasize here, folks, is, is that I know it's rather conceptual at this stage, right? We've put out a memo that describes this methodology. It's rather conceptual, it's rather theoretical. Again, we're looking for, did we, are, do any of the factors we put forward cause heartburn or concern? And did we miss any factors? We're going to, we're going to open up a written comment window here. You can submit comments to us all the way up until April 3rd. We'll try and summarize those comments at the CETA board meeting on April 17th. But then we will be back in May or early June with another study session where we present the preliminary ranking of projects. And at that point in time, you'll be able to provide your input on specific projects that, that showed up in the CETA Transmission Study and let us know if we have done a good job of scoring them or if we've, you know, we've underscored one project or overscored a project. You can, you can feel free to weigh in at that point in time. And we will have, you know, a written comment period in May or June as well. So that's all coming up. So I think with that, I think we've covered the, the preliminary introduction to all this. I know that Kathy and Steve Black are going to do some facilitated discussion here. So Kathy, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and pull the slides down. And this next portion is for the CETA board members. So I'm going to hand it to my colleague, Steve Black.
Thank you.
Board members, we might invite you to come on camera if you'd like to, to join us.
Thank you, Kathy. Can you hear me okay? Kathy?
Yeah, you're good, Steve.
Yep, you're good, Steve. Thank you.
Thank you. Just looking for the thumbs up. Okay, so I can't see all of you, so please raise your hand if you have questions or would like to speak. I want to, first of all, thank you, Maury, for that good overview. And we may want to, some of these questions may, may refer to the, to the slide deck. So we can pull that up if necessary, or if you have questions about the memo, which is really the operative document, we can pull that up. We have about 40 minutes for questions from the board. So we're going to start with questions and discussion from members of the, of the CETA board. I just want to emphasize a couple of points before we start that, that Maury has already said, but I think they bear repeating. This is not, first of all, the CETA board is not being asked to make a decision today. I want to make that clear. Second, we will have a, there is a board meeting scheduled for the 17th, as Maury said. And the, the only decision, I think, and Maury, I defer to you on this, but I just want to make clear that what we're looking for at that board meeting is thumbs up, thumbs down, sort of, are we headed in the right direction, right? This is, this is an art and a science. It's, it's not, despite the quantification, it won't be as precise perhaps as, as some would like. But if we're headed in the right direction and if these are the right factors and the right criteria, then as Maury just said, we come back in June for a, a board meeting to look at the results of this process. And I think, Maury, correct me if I'm wrong, but that framing and the next steps are important for you all to keep in mind as you ask your questions today. Any, Maury, did I get that right?
You got that right, Steve. Yep.
All right. All right. So with that, I'm going to take, I apologize if I didn't get you in order, but Roger, I'll start with you. I know Carl has some questions. Nate has his hand up. If you're on the board and have questions, please raise your hand. Otherwise I'm going to call on you. So let's start with Roger.
Great. I've got two. I don't know if it's easier to do both at the same time, but I'll try. The first is, I, I think many of us have been on scoring boards and systems like this where there's a scoring process. If the board is not involved in the scoring per se, but gets presented with these numbers and the numbers reflect a very intensive 10-factor review, how does the board independently, or you know, what, what, how do you see the board revisiting the scoring system? The, the way I've seen it work at times on boards I've been on is that the board actually participates in some way in the scoring itself. And I, I just want to make sure we're, we're clear to the public and within ourselves about how, how we're, how we're expected to revisit what I think is the key step, which is the scoring done by the, using the criteria. So I'll stop with that one.
Yeah. So good question, Maury. Do you want to take that?
Sure. So my thinking, Roger, is, is that, you know, we're going to have the folks at Energy Strategies help us with the initial scoring of these projects. And they're going to, they're going to use the, the high, medium, low, poor scoring factors, right? They're going to share that preliminary ranking with myself and, and the GridWorks team here. And then I'm going to write a memo that I'm hoping has enough detail in it so that the board can understand how each project has been scored on, on each factor, at least the ones that sort of rise to the top. And so that the, the board can look at the memo, read the memo and gain some insights into how each project was scored. And then again, it's up to the board. The board can decide where to draw the line for the shortlist. The board could, could even change the ranking if it so desired. So, but I'm hoping that the memo that I deliver to the board is enough information for you all to gain insight into the scoring without having to have each board member involved in the detailed scoring.
Nor do we revisit the scoring numbers themselves under this proposal. Correct?
Well, I'm saying you'll have enough detail that if you don't agree that we, if you think that we have underscored a particular project, I mean, the board could always, you know, factor that into its deliberations and decide to, you know, move that project up or draw the line below that project. I mean, I hope to have enough detail in the, the memo that I send to you so that you'll be able to use your judgment on whether or not we have appropriately scored each project. If there's projects that we have underscored, you can factor that in. If there's projects you feel we have overscored, you can factor that in. I'm, I'm hoping that there's enough detail in the memo to, to, to make you comfortable that, that the scoring is either reasonable or, you know, for you to make, you know, minor adjustments.
And the other related question I think is easily addressed is in, in other situations, I've had a broader range. So, you know, nobody's going to get a zero, I don't think, just as your template suggested. So we're looking at one, twos and threes. And if we're really trying to separate the wheat from the chaff, I would just think about, you know, without over analyzing it, is it one through five, one through 10? I mean, we're trying to really give ourselves the ability to, to, to separate and bring a certain group to the top. And I'm just afraid, and your numbers suggest that, that we're going to be awfully close, given the one, two, three system. So I don't know if you've talked about that or thought about it.
Maury or Keegan, do you want to address that?
I'm, I'm, I'm happy to jump in and take it, right? I mean, Roger, you, you may be right, but I, I think we just have to wait and see and, and see what Keegan and Tom come up with as far as project scores. I'm not as, I'm not as certain as you are that projects won't get a zero on some of those factors. So, you know, we'll just have to see, you know, as Keegan was talking about, I'm, I'm anticipating that some of these projects, that there's clusters of projects that are grouped with really close scores, but that there might be, between each cluster, there might be some separation. but that there might be, um, between each cluster, there might be some separation.
Yeah, I think that's what I feel, Maury, but I also think that we, um, in thinking about the scoring, we intentionally tried not to make it overly complex. So we didn't get into a situation where it's like, oh, so this line, a six or a seven? Okay, like, well, for these reasons, it could be a seven. For, for these, it could be, oh, okay, this one's a 6.52. All right, this other one is a 7.1. And it's like, oh my gosh. So we tried to come up with some elegant, you know, places where it meets the criteria, it meets basic expectations, it's got minimal alignment, or it doesn't, right? So those are hopefully coarse enough that we can minimize debate and expedite the scoring. But I do recognize that it, it could result in some clustering. We just kind of, kind of won't, won't know yet. We thought we could always make it more complicated, uh, later. That, that, that was our, that was our thinking.
All right, thank you. Um, I've got Nate, Carl, Ron, Michelle and Lea in that order. So thanks for putting your hands up. Um, Nate?
Good afternoon, everybody. Uh, Nate Guitars. Um, thank you guys for that work. I mean, it's, uh, it's a very robust criteria. A lot, uh, a lot that would, you know, gives us a lot to work with and dive it down and take a deep look into these projects. Um, one of the ones that I, uh, and maybe I missed it too, but, um, where's the workforce factor in this? Um, a, a local workforce, uh, for transmission lines. Um, there's a lot of contractors that come in, come in and travel the country to do this. But being that we're the Colorado Electric Transmission Authority Board, I think that we need to, uh, take a look at, uh, our home base, local workforces instead of, uh, uh, you know, the, we know we're gonna get, uh, a transient workforce from, from outside our state coming in to look at some of these projects as well. So I don't know if that came up in any of the conversations, but I think maybe we need to add in a slight bump in scoring and, and reward some of our local workforce and local, uh, local contractors or utilities that want to put this, push these projects forward.
Good point, Nate. Um, Maury, I'll turn it to you.
Yeah, I agree. I think it's a good point. Um, what I don't know, and maybe Keegan can help us here, is, is if we're gonna have that information at this stage of the process, right? So, um, you know, at, at, at some point, I think, you know, local workforce should receive a, you know, a, a priority over, um, you know, out of state work, workers. Um, I just don't know if we know the details of who's going to be constructing these lines at this stage. That, that may be something that has to come along, uh, during the due diligence process, Nate, and, and factor into, um, you know, how we, how we want to partner with certain developers, right?
Yeah, I can make that a little more clear, Maury. You're, you're not gonna know at this stage. You're, you're not gonna know until you're talking with EPC vendors and you're very far down the line and talking about the actual construction of these assets. Um, to front run that to some extent, to the extent it's a priority for CETA, you know, when you're engaging with potential partners and signing MOUs and thinking about those things, that, that, that could be, you know, that's more of a commercial negotiation, I think. And that's a good time to maybe have that conversation like, hey, CETA, we, we're, we're CETA, we want to partner with you, but in order for us to do that, you know, here's some minimum standards we have with regards to that. That's more about who, in terms of the organization that you're working with, and less about what, meaning the individual project at this stage. I, but I, I, I get what you're saying, Nate, and I do think it's ultimately very important. Uh, we just don't, don't have the insight yet, uh, as far as part of this.
Yeah, and I think part of that too, is once we take the deeper dive into what projects you are bringing, because they're all obviously not, I mean, they're probably all at different levels and stages in development. So that's why I also think it'd be important though, is if the CETA board really wants to emphasize supporting a local workforce, that at least there's some mention of this. So that, uh, a local workforce knows that that may, that may play a role in how aggressive they want to bid this or really take a look at it. So like I said, I know they're at different stages, but I think it's important for this study to just highlight that too. Are you a local workforce or, or are you gonna be bringing people in from outside our state to do these jobs? And, because I mean, I think that's a big part of our community engagement, when we go through and, and help support these projects and the size of these projects. And when we go into some of these rural communities or whatever community, we can actually help, help push these projects forward and educate these folks in these communities that these good paying jobs could lead to careers and that we're looking to help, uh, bring it from homegrown, homegrown talent and future workers.
So quick, quick time check. We have about 25 minutes for this part of this, of the agenda. So I'm gonna, um, we may need to move quickly. I know Carl has some very good questions already prepared. And, and Maury, I'm, I'm gonna defer or refer a lot of these to you. So, um, Carl, why don't you start? And it may be useful just to run through all of your questions, but I'll leave that up to you.
Yeah, we can, we can have more discussion too. But let me, let me start with a very high level, very fast question. What's the cycle on which we're imagining repeating this process and going through the projects? Is it once a year? Is it once per transmission plan? Is it once a quarter? Because that kind of affects the next one that I have.
So Carl, I, I think it was really important for me at least, in, in working with the GridWorks team and working with the Energy Strategies team, that we were putting together a, a filtering and ranking process that could be used, uh, going forward in the future, right? So this is not just a one-time thing and we're done. This is something that the CETA board is going to establish. We may, you know, upgrade it and, and revise it in the future, but it's, 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 it's the basis for doing future work. So I think you're on the, the right track there. Uh, in terms of the cycle, I mean, I, it, it sort of depends on, um, you know, how many projects, I, I'm thinking that projects can come to CETA in multiple ways. They can come to CETA through us conducting a transmission capacity expansion study like we just completed. They can come to us through, uh, developers approaching us and saying, uh, do you have an interest in working with us on a project? Um, and whether or not that project that is proposed by the developers is a good fit for CETA is an important question. And I think these, these factors and these, uh, you know, ranking methodologies can help us make that determination. So again, I think this lives beyond just this effort. In terms of the cycle, it sort of depends on, you know, when we do our next study and, and how many transmission developers are actively pursuing projects in Colorado. So I don't really have a good answer for you.
Yeah, so, uh, that connects, and, and I've got a couple more, but we can, we can save them. But this one connects the idea of who's, the lawyer in me wants to know who's responsible for putting forth the best case for this project. Is it what we have in the plan so far? Or is a potential proponent of it in the game here with a burden of persuasion or production? And what happens if like, you know, oops, they fail because they didn't, they forgot to mention that there's a local connection in Colorado, just to use the earlier example. But they come back and, or they, or just they didn't have one, but they come back two months later and say, hey, we figured this out. We, we're gonna land this thing right here in southwestern Colorado, you know, and it's gonna, um, that'll make the project even better. Can you have another look at us? You know, so, so who's, who, who champions these products? And, um, and, and sort of how do we deal with the idea that maybe somebody wants a second look? Or maybe something wasn't fully baked, but it's, it just, it's suddenly the magic happened and it's ready to propose to us. And who's responsible for that? Are we, are we umpires? Or, you know, are we team members? And, um, and by the way, I just, I'll stop while you about to answer. I'll just make two quick comments. Comment number one is, I like the idea of you and the other folks, you know, GridWorks and everything, putting together your ideas and then we look at it and we can dive deeper if we want to. Why a six, not a seven, you know, that kind of, kind of thing. Second thing is, at one stage, it was really, really powerful in the CREZ process to use a skin in the game test. And, you know, the projects where there was substantial skin in the game, first of all, you had to have some to clear the basic threshold. And then to really succeed, we worked really hard showing the commitments we were making to this project because we really wanted it to succeed. And I say that we, we, I was then a proponent with a company that was building transmission, uh, renewable, I mean, sorry, renewable energy, wanting transmission. So anyway, um, I'll just leave those as comments, but I'll, I want to focus on the question of who's responsible for getting the ball across the line with us?
So Carl, I think the answer to that is, is the Partnership Development Committee, right? So again, we're gonna get a shortlist of projects here. And then I think what we're gonna actively be doing is, is reaching out to independent transmission developers, incumbent utilities, uh, and, and, and seeing what their interest in partnering with us on projects is. Now, if during this ranking and filtering process, you know, uh, there's someone that feels that we haven't given their project a high enough score and they want to bring evidence to us to, you know, get that project back on the table. I'm suspecting that they're gonna probably want to enter into some sort of, you know, non-disclosure agreement with us to share, you know, detailed information about the project. And I think the place to do that is the Partnership Development Committee. They approach the Partnership Development Committee. They say, you know, we have some further information we'd like to share with CETA about, uh, this project. We enter into a, you know, an NDA agreement, they share their information. And ultimately, the Partnership Development Committee is the, is the judge that makes the determination whether or not, um, you know, that information was persuasive and we now want to, you know, elevate that project in our, in our list of projects or not. So I, I, that's how I think about it. I see that you put a thumbs up, so, all right.
So Carl, uh, with your permission, I think I'm gonna go to, to Ron next, um, um, with, but I want to allow time for all of the questions from the board members. So, uh, I'll come back to you. Uh, Ron Lair.
Um, thank you. Uh, and thanks to all, uh, for all the work that's been done here. I think this is all, uh, directionally in the right direction and it gives us a framework for developing this part of our work. So, uh, thanks to everyone who participated here. Um, I have a lot of questions, as you might imagine, and so I don't wanna, I don't wanna, um, spend the next hour. I can't, uh, I don't think there's time for that. But let me say, my big concerns are, we're gonna need better graphics to support this kind of decision-making. The maps that we have now are, when you blow them up, they get really fuzzy really fast. And I, I think it's insufficient to support our decision-making. So we'll need that. Um, and we need to have the, the legend or the key to the map be, um, available uh, at the project level as well, so we can tell what we're talking about and what's around it. Um, my second concern is, um, reliability is really the big, uh, the big issue in terms of customer savings from building out the transmission system. And that's because it helps to avoid big blackouts, uh, you know, PG&E burned down Paradise and killed 70 people, was it, or 90? Uh, these are big threats to the system and it ought to be much more, um, front lobe in our thinking. And so, uh, if we define reliability as being local and known, it seems to me that puts it squarely in the utility scope and omits the concern I have, which is regional reliability will rest on our ability to, to build out the transmission in a thoughtful way. Uh, my third concern is that we have decision-making today, or yesterday, I guess, for approved the markets plus, uh, filing by SVP at, at FERC and some entities locally. And in the region have made commitments of various kinds to fund the build out of that, uh, markets plus. And, and we may see, we may see approvals being sought at the PUC on that. It, it, it sets up a, a crazy quilt of, of new seams, basically. Um, we have a, we have an insane crazy quilt of 38 balancing areas, which with seams now, um, will, it will be less in, insane if we have two, but we'll still have them. And that's gonna affect what's, how markets will work and the markets will affect flows of, of power and, and the need for transmission to support that. So we gotta pay attention to markets, it seems to me. And that, we gotta remember that our statute is embedded in a, in a piece of legislation that does move the state towards markets by 2030. Now, we may get to a day ahead market and not an RTO market, which also raises the question of whether we're gonna be doing bilateral, limit-based transmission operations or whether something like an, the APS move toward flow-based transmission is gonna be in place. And, and again, that, those market issues and how the transmission system is operated will have impacts on where you want to build transmission and for what. Um, third, no, fourth one, uh, projects are defined in the statute as facilities. Uh, but it seems to me that if you read the statute as a whole, I'm, as a lawyer, never satisfied when an engineer and economist reads a statute to me. I go read it for myself. If you read the statute as a whole, including the market sections of the statute, which cross-reference CETA's responsibilities, um, then the APS flow-based in a, in a markets plus day ahead market without an RTO, moving toward flow-based is, is a real issue. Uh, fifth, I think we ought to be open to technology demonstrations. You know, if you never use something, you don't have the data on which to support its further use or avoiding its further use. And, uh, so I think there's a role for CETA to think about what kind of project demonstrations there ought to be for new technologies. You know, a place for, for linemen to learn, uh, to stitch up new kinds of, of conductors and so on. So, uh, that's, that's another one. And then finally, it seems to me that we ought to be thinking about the links to the PUC's CPCN jurisdiction. And not only what they're doing now, but what kind of layout of CPCNs we're gonna see, uh, going forward. I think there's, there's change underway at the PUC in terms of how they, uh, require planning for transmission. And, uh, we've been involved in that and we know what's going on there a little bit. But it seems to me that, that charting that out, seeing what those trends might be and how they affect our decision-making might be something else we need to keep in mind. So those are my concerns. I won't, uh, I don't think it's probably time to discuss them much. But, uh, as you talk more, I'm gonna raise more questions. So they're the ones I have today. Thanks.
Ron, thanks. Maury, I'm gonna go straight to Michelle. Um, just in the interest of time, but Ron, please know we're taking careful notes. Uh, the session is being recorded and all good, good points. And I know we'll have time to discuss those going forward. Michelle, I'm gonna turn to you next for your questions.
Thanks, Steve, and thanks, everyone, for, for the, all the work in going into this. I, I've served on a couple of, um, project task groups, uh, scoring, taking in hundreds of applications through an RFP and going through pretty, um, regimented scoring that has to be approved by commissions and, um, you know, things like that. So I, I, the first thing I just wanted to comment on was the reporting of that scoring. Happy to, to kind of help give some examples. Keegan, sounds like you probably already have a lot of, um, ideas on that. But, but when we were, when we were doing this, this was an annual RFP and we would have to score this on a, you know, five-page scoring um, rubric. And all of the results came out in a, um, in a spreadsheet, in a tabular spreadsheet format that was pretty, pretty long, but, um, pretty detailed, but, but really helpful. And it did help to summarize it with detail. So you had the score and you had the reasoning, a short narrative behind that score. I found that really helpful when I was, when I went from the task, the, the task group of the scoring to the decision-maker commission. Um, so, so just a little bit of feedback on that, um, to comment on two things other people have said. Skin in the game was, um, in that, in those situations, those RFPs showing that there was a little bit of match or a little bit of, um, other funding was a, a very important, um, score, piece of the rubric. Uh, what was, what, oh, um, fire mitigation, emergency management, noxious weed management, um, long-term operations and maintenance. All of that was in one umbrella. Um, but I think, you know, to what Ron was, Ron's point, uh, regarding fire and, and emergency, those would be something I would definitely want to see in the scoring criteria. We have talked in the past about respecting and, and trying to use, of course, that is one, it's already listed here, natural resource, or sorry, existing corridors. But I would certainly want to incorporate wildlife movement corridors and check the box that we're not, um, you know, having an impact on, on those movement corridors, movement patterns. And then the last thing I had was on Nate's point about the local workforce requirement. I certainly understand, um, I've been involved with the development of a lot of these types of projects that at an early stage you had, you don't have your EPC selected. But you can, you can commit to using, um, a certain percentage of local workforce that can affect your score. So, um, yeah, I don't think that we, we can expect people to have their EPC, um, and some of those, you know, P90 or 90% design type. P90 or 90% design type, um, level. But I do think that we can ask for a commitment, um, at some level. And maybe you score higher if you can make a greater commitment to local workforce. That's all I had. Sorry, I didn't have any questions. I just had to throw a little more bolt to some of the, um, uh, scoring items or scoring items on the list.
So Maury, do you, you want to respond to any of those or do you want to keep going and get all this down? And then I'll turn it back to you.
No, I thought those were good comments. I think we can, we can work to try and incorporate some of those, uh, those points into our our current scoring and ranking framework. And we can work going forward to make sure that when we're partnering with people that they're, they're considering, you know, what it is we are seeking through a partnership, right? So there's, there's multiple ways of hitting those points. So thank you, Michelle. Um, but Steve, I'll give it back to you so we can keep on time.
Okay. Thank you, Michelle, and I took notes as well. Um, Leah.
Thanks, everyone. Um, appreciate the presentation, um, from the GridWorks team and your continued partnership and all of this. So very grateful for that. Uh, a, um, sort of specific question, which is, um, I don't have our enabling statute, you know, right here to evaluate word for word. But when I look at what we have in the criteria, what does jump out to me is I don't see a place where we're specifically or explicitly trying to prioritize, um, for certain system benefits or for cost reductions. Um, and I just know that upward rate pressure is a huge concern. Um, affordability is a big concern right now. And, um, I, I think it would behoove us to think about how do we take appropriate considerations around any one project's contribution to, um, downward rate pressure or lower system costs. Um, we also know that resource adequacy is becoming an increasing concern in the state. So are we making sure that we're prioritizing, um, somewhere or taking to into account those kinds of system benefits? The other thing I'd ask that we really make an effort to do is, um, to sort of, I'll call it, do the exercise of what will we do with this priority list once we have it? Um, because I've seen many an exercise that, you know, uh, spends a lot of time thinking about how, what are the right things to score on and what are the right ways to score them? And doesn't spend any time on how are we going to actually use the scoring? And I think, you know, I hear our reference to the Partnership Committee, but it, I think it's worthwhile to just actually think about, okay, what do we want the Partnership Committee to do with it? And did the scoring result in the information we need for them to actually do it effectively? Um, and so I just, uh, encourage us to do that exercise. And then, uh, the kind of macro thought, which connects on some things that Carl and and Michelle and others shared is I do think it's worth us considering our role to look at which projects have likely very high value to the state, but are not coming into fruition by natural forces, or excuse me, natural market forces. All right. And what is the role of the CETA to reduce the risks, improve the cost profile such that natural market forces take over? And so I do think it's worth kind of thinking about where our role intersects with competitive and market-like forces in bringing these projects to fruition.
So, thank you, Leah. And Maury, I think I will, I want to turn it to you be because those are all points, Leah, that I know Maury uh, agrees with and has thought about.
Yeah, so, you know, I'll, I'll try and be brief here, right? I I think that it is really important for the CETA Board to think about which projects are a best fit for CETA. And I think in a certain sense, the projects that are a best fit for CETA are the ones that are not moving forward today because of either regulatory failure or market failure. And it could be either. And and I think those are a good fit for CETA to try and, uh, champion and move forward. And so, uh, we've got a, a best fit criteria in the initial filtering process. Um, and, you know, maybe that's something that we need to give more weight to in the, in the second scoring and ranking. So I, but, but it is something, Leah, that we have thought about. We've had multiple discussions about it. We ultimately decided not to put it in the second scoring, um, stage. But but we're open to having further discussion about that, so.
I'm, I'm gonna, um, take 10 seconds because Leah sparked something. The local outreach, um, factor, you know, we spent almost a year on our stakeholder outreach process. And I just, I didn't see a lot of reference to that, but there are a lot of overlaps. So I would just commend our team to kind of revisit everything we did there and make sure our criteria fit with that pretty well.
If I might jump in, I'm also would encourage, uh, or invite Keegan to come forward and and share with us what kind of information do we have about the the projects that you're looking at? And and what's reasonable to be able to evaluate at this stage?
Yeah, I was, I was just going to share some, some thoughts on that, uh, set what what I understand is the purpose of this. So, um, this is much less like an RFP evaluation, right? We're not evaluating applications by anybody. These are, um, kind of hypothetical projects at this point. They, they, they do not have a sponsor. That's actually what CETA is, is CETA is evaluating if it should become the sponsor, right? So there is no community outreach has been done, no deep consideration of how to avoid or mitigate environmental issues has been done. No conversations about where the workforce would come from has been done. These are just ideas at this time. And the decision that the CETA Board is trying to make are any of these ideas good enough that we should put our energy behind them? That's bucket one of things for CETA to consider. So we don't really, CETA needs to go through it thoughtfully and objectively and have rationale for what it does. But there's no filing or any we got you moment, because these are just things that came out of our study, right? So you don't owe anybody anything. You can make decisions as you see fit, in my opinion, right? Find the best ones for CETA, however you want, as efficiently as you can. A lot of the techno-economic work that is being requested is very important and can come after you do that. Doing that amount of work for all these projects is extraordinarily expensive. Um, and it, it's not something that she that should try to take on. However, if CETA finds two or three good ideas, say, we're not sure which one of these we want to go forward with, what additional diligence can we do? Which one has the best benefit cost ratio? Which one is helping this community the most? Those are questions that can be asked after you do this kind of screening, ranking and selection exercise. That, in my view, is CETA's kind of like bucket one. And there is no commercial negotiations or any terms or anything that CETA has to do to identify those projects. Bucket two, for things that CETA is interested in exploring, have to do more with partnerships. And I understand that's very, going to be very heavily tied to the commercial terms and negotiations with the committee. I can't remember the name, Maury, but the one that you've mentioned, the one that we've talked about. I see that as altogether different. And, um, someday I could see a solicitation process when CETA is more structured and mature, where maybe those two things are combined, right? And you are evaluating developer proposals and and new ideas, and you're trying to do that exactly at the same time. And that's probably when you do need to have a lot of that information simultaneously. So I I just wanted to offer that in case it helps to clear things up and condense the scope of what what I think is trying to be accomplished here.
Thank you, Keegan, um, very helpful. And Leah, I hope, hope that was helpful. Um, Carl, I want to come back to you because you did have a couple of other questions. Uh, we're, we're running up against, um, time, so I'm gonna.
I'll, I can save those other questions for a longer discussion, but I do want to react to what Keegan just said. At first, I would say thank you. That helps clarify it a great deal. But something we used to say when I was at RMI was all the really good mistakes are made on the first days. And so the, the concern I have is that we stay open to the, the idea that this filtering process off of our plan is going to inform the interested public and potential developers. And there is going to be a cybernetic flow between, you know, sort of bucket one and bucket two. And we just need to be mindful of those. I guess that's kind of why I was going like, who's the proponent for what? Right? There may not be proponents. We don't have to treat it like we're doing a commercial negotiation when we're coming out of the plan identified projects. But once they start getting momentum, they're going to have sponsors or potential interested sponsors or participants or impacted people and all that. And then, and and things we eliminated may not, you know, may want to come back. And so, so we just, we'll have to kind of stay fluid on this. Um, I think we can learn by doing and take Keegan's approach. You know, do that screening, start learning what we value and how we value things. But just remember that, you know, if we, it might be a mistake to eliminate something too early because it could actually have merit if slightly improved on or grabbed by a potential partner for the Partnership Development Committee's consideration or whatever. So more, more just general comment, but also starting with that, big thanks to Keegan for help centering what we're trying to do here.
Makes sense, Carl. I agree that you'll do that, you will have to have a circle back. If I don't know anything about transmission projects, is they generally don't die, they just come back, so.
Thank you, but both. Um, before I turn it over to Kathy, Chris Kasky and James Lester, uh, we haven't heard from you. Do you have questions or shall we move on to stakeholders?
I'm happy with the conversation so far. Thank you all. We can move on.
Thanks for listening in and James?
No, this has been very informative. Appreciate it. We'll move forward.
All right, Kathy, back to you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all, board members. We really appreciate you weighing in and and giving us your initial reactions. And stakeholders, thank you. I know there's been several questions coming in the chat, so we really appreciate your patience. Uh, we'll turn for the next, uh, 40 minutes or so to, uh, hear from you all. And I'm going to reiterate here, we are not looking for formal comments today like the board. This is a chance for you to ask questions, seek clarifications. We've got Keegan here, we've got Maury to, um, provide some initial, uh, thoughts and answer initial questions. So if you would please raise your Zoom hand, I'll call on speakers in turn. Again, I will reiterate, uh, recording and the slides will be available on the CETA website shortly. Uh, several of you are asking that in the chat, so it is coming to you. And then lastly, before I open the floor here, I would ask that you please keep your comments to a reasonable length. Uh, we do have a full house and a lot coming through in the chat, so just be respectful of others. With that, I'm going to turn to my first hand, Dan, I see you, Chris Neal and Vijay will go in that order. Dan?
Hi, yeah, thanks. Uh, just first want to say I really appreciate the, um, the framework. I think it's, it's a really good, um, starting framework. And, um, uh, I think it, I don't have the experience that some of your board members do in in applying frameworks like that, but it looks pretty good. I did want to amplify something that, um, that Leah, uh, was talking about. To the degree that a transmission project can, um, give one or more utilities access to, uh, you know, diverse resources, resources that may be a little bit further, uh, afield geographically, perhaps, um, make their reach bigger than the weather. Um, it can have really substantial impacts on the planning reserve margin that the utility, uh, uses in its capacity expansion and on the, um, effective load carrying capacity of of resources to the degree you're able to, uh, reach resources that are are maybe, uh, uncorrelated or poorly correlated with the more local resources. And in turn, that could have very significant impacts on the costs of, um, resource adequacy. So I I just, I didn't see where those kinds of considerations would, um, be accounted for in in what you proposed, um, today. And so just wanted to, um, raise those for your consideration.
Thank you, Dan. Resource adequacy, yes, that is something that the team talked about. Maury, do you want to start?
Well, I can, I can offer some preliminary comments and then Dan, maybe we should talk some more. And then again, this is something that, um, we've had some emails flying around here at CETA with people asking us questions about resource adequacy. So I'm just going to share my views and then we can, uh, and we can, you know, continue to have this conversation. I think it's really important to look at all of these electrical system issues through the lens that CETA is a transmission developer. We're not here to solve the, the planning reserve margin problems or the, you know, expansion of the generation part of resource adequacy, right? We're simply here to make sure that we are building a transmission system that will help with resource adequacy. We've got a, a, a factor in there, it's called the system connectivity factor. I'm of the opinion that that transmission has a really important role to play in facilitating, um, uh, ensuring resource adequacy. That's through making sure that we are building transmission to diverse renewable resource zones, making sure that we're building transmission to interconnect different service territories and building transmission that accesses market hubs, right? By doing that, you are giving the people that operate the system optionality, real optionality, real resource optionality. So that when, so that when there are emergencies on the system and supply and demand are tight, they have real options that they can go to to maintain, um, the operation of the system and keep the lights on. And so I think that transmission has an important role to play. We just need to make sure that we think about it through the lens of a, a transmission developer like CETA. We're not here to, um, necessarily, uh, you know, tell people how to do, um, you know, set the planning reserve margin or how to make it easier to, you know, site and construct generation. We're not, we're not, that's not our role. Our role is transmission. And so I I hope that helps, Dan. I I know I probably didn't address your specific questions, but we can have further conversations.
Okay, I just quickly to clarify, I wasn't suggesting that CETA take on that role. I was just suggesting there, there could be a lot of value there that might, uh, that I think should play, uh, a role in your ranking. Um, that, that's all I was saying.
Yeah.
Thank you, Dan. Uh, we'll move on to Chris, Neil, please.
Yes, I just want to kind of caution about or have a concern about how you're going about this. And I I'm a math major, so, you know, I looked, there are about 40 projects in the, uh, CETA report. And you want to bring them down to about four or so roughly. And I just think that's going to be really tough and it's going to be really tough to defend your selections. It's going to be easy to say, oh, if we change this one by one point, it'll score better. And we change that one by another point, it'll be the picked one. And I just think it's going to be tough to do this and to come up with really defendable selection. But I, uh, hope the best for you.
Thank you, Chris. We realize the enormity of the task before the team here. We appreciate the, the comments. I'll move to Vijay, Tyler, and then Ken Wilson.
Hello, Vijay, WRA, Markets and Transmission. Uh, this is good stuff. Sorry, I was late to the meeting. Um, uh, three areas of comment. One is, uh, the document is actually really well structured and I'm not, I I will say repeating that you've thought through really well the stage one and two components. My only concern is in stage two, your high metric says, I don't want to get semantics, but we live in a world of semantics, is significant impact, should that include measurable impact? Because that's your highest criteria. So it, there's got to be some kind of quantitative or qualitative, uh, valuation or assessment that would be factored in. So it's a small element, but for what it's worth. The green reliability metric, should that be compliance with, as Keegan knows very well and some of you, uh, if you're, if you're trying to ensure an actual transmission line is getting connected or built, it is going to have to comply with the NOC standard. So alignment makes me feel, are you, are you just not trying to take on the compliance job, but just hoping they have done the compliance? I didn't know what that meant by that. And then, um, the, this is the bigger one for maybe Maury and some others. And your clean energy goals, uh, I really like your metric on tapping into a known, a res. Uh, but have you thought about a metric that incentivizes co-location? If a transmission developer wants to target, uh, an area where there is clear open access to a res, but a zone, but there's also storage opportunities to be integrated efficiently. So the co-location benefits, I didn't see anywhere. It could be somewhere and I missed it. And my last comment is on number six, when you look at system connectivity benefits, how are you defining your footprint on the system connectivity? We know there's a 60-mile connection between PS COVID gateway. If we had that connection done, the system-wide benefits could be, do we take the whole pack footprint benefits of reduced congestion? Or do we take, what, I mean, I'm just trying to understand your boundaries around system connectivity benefits? So those are my three areas of comments and thank you.
Thank you, Vijay. Why don't we start with the first one I heard on the grid reliability metric and compliance with NERC standards? Keegan, maybe if I turn to you for that of how are you incorporating NERC standards into the consideration of reliability?
Yeah, thanks for taking the one at a time. I lost the thread near the end on the series, but you can start with that one. So all that we're trying to say is we're, you know, NERC has a published criteria that we can use to evaluate system reliability performance kind of with and without the project. And we know a little bit of that uh, from our study. Um, and all all that we're saying is that um, the projects will ideally improve system reliability, you know, based off that criteria. There is no benefit analysis, right? I I I heard that word come out a few times. It's kind of a yes or a no and how good, right? The the screening stage is yes or no, and the scoring is, well, how good does it do? Uh, and that's about it, right? This is not a benefit study. Um, those are, you know, more complicated than than what can be done here. And so we're just trying to get an indication. So we're not taking over any NERC compliance or anything like that. The the models and simulations we use are twenty-year models. That's, you know, not even a NERC compliance time horizon, right? So this is all just indicative information um, on that front. What's the next one, Kathy?
Sure, thank you, Keegan. So next one, Vijay, and I might need a little bit of clarification here. You're asking about co-location benefits and if storage is co-located with a line?
Yeah, in the clean energy category, could there be a metric specific to promoting co-location? Because that could incentivize more projects to be proposed where they're trying to align uh, trying to combine transmission investments with a storage opportunity. So something that co-location in itself could be valuable, like I tell you to the cake metric. I didn't see that.
I I'm not sure I follow, Vijay, but if if what you're saying uh, about the co-location of storage with generation assets, I think the transmission is sort of agnostic on whether that occurs or not. And that would be left to the generation that might be associated with the transmission to decide.
I meant transmission with generation or storage. I was saying the other way, not just storage. I just gave storage as an example. What if a transmission line is being posed and they can tap into known generation assets? And that'd be a co-location package of an application. That's what I meant by saying.
It would score well on the clean energy goals, which talks about the integration of resources.
Exactly, yeah, yeah, yeah. Because I think I feel like a bonus. And the third was that's your system connectivity metric, not yours, and the document has system connectivity. What would be your boundaries of measuring that system connectivity benefits?
It depends. Um, it could be a connectivity between two um, you know, incumbent utilities in Colorado who have substations three miles apart, but they don't touch each other. And there's some, you know, reason to to connect them. That could be one. Or it could be, you know, a much longer a line that goes hundreds of miles into a different balance scenario and captures it diversity savings, you know, which Dan brought up. So so it it would really depend. Uh, and both of those would qualify in some way, right? And both could potentially be scored well.
Thank you. You confirm my thought. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to Tyler and then Ken. Thank you for your patience. Tyler?
Thank Kathy and um, thanks everyone for bringing up this memo. I agree with everyone else that it's really well put together and clear um, how you all are going to do this. Um, I also have three questions. The first one, I just wanted to highlight Remy's point that it would be really helpful for stakeholders to get that list of projects. I think right now in the study, it's just grouped by, there's some lines that are listed out individually, but a lot of them are kind of grouped into reconductoring and it's kind of hard to identify on that map exactly what lines SITA is looking at. Um, and that so the next two are more questions, more broad questions. Um, the first one is on the strategic bit in stage one where you're talking about, does the project address gaps that utilities are unlikely to resolve on their own? I'm a little concerned by the kind of example you're giving about traditional reconductoring projects that are entirely within a service territory, kind of failing that process from the get-go. Um, and my concern is that I thought we did this transmission study as a gap analysis. And that means that all of the reconductoring projects that we've identified are not being pursued by utilities right now. Um, and I just wanted to get more clarification, like does this mean that any reconductoring project that was identified, that's only within a u- utility service territory, is going to be automatically failing this first test? Um, or if you could just provide a little bit more color around that. Um, and then Kathy, I don't know, you want me to go to my last question? Because that was a big question. Um, but maybe we'll let Maury respond.
Yeah, let's let's take a a breath here and uh, reconductoring is definitely something that the team talked about as well. So Maury, maybe I'll turn to you to answer that. And Tyler, we will come back to you.
Sounds great. Thanks, Kathy.
Yeah, I I, you know, so again, the the transmission study was trying to identify gaps. And I would uh, bet that most of the reconductoring projects that are identified in the SITA study are not currently on utilities plans, right? So that's why they're there, they're in the study. Now we have the this sort of the second stage question of whether or not those projects are a good fit for SITA, right? And there's different flavors of reconductoring, right? If it's a reconductoring project that involves two service territories, maybe that is a good fit for SITA. Because maybe the reason it's not moving forward is is because there's some sort of, like I said, regulatory barrier or market barrier that's preventing those two utilities from teaming up and doing that reconductoring. Um, our initial thinking is, is that if it is a reconductoring project that is wholly within a single service territory and it is a, I mean, we're we're thinking all of these projects are good projects, right? And it's a good project that the utility at some point is going to recognize that that reconductoring project is needed, has value. And they're likely to step into our shoes, even if we do decide to do it. And so part of this is, is trying to make sure that we're not spending an awful lot of time chasing down partners for projects that others are ultimately going to step in and take over for us. We want, we, you know, we're again, we're we're wanting to move forward quickly, identify projects, identify potential partners and sort of achieve some early success here. And I think we want to avoid projects where we have a a pretty good likelihood that someone's going to step into our shoes and take on that, take on that project. So I think that's why the reconductoring solely within a single service territory. We may not have written it up as well as we could have in the memo, but I think that's why we're thinking those get, those get filtered out is because there's a high likelihood that that we would not be able to develop those projects. Someone would step into our shoes. Did I, did I get that right, Keegan? I know that we've had multiple conversations about this.
Yeah, and I it, Tyler, you brought something up and you, you know, understand this well. You guys have done a work here. In in our view, just because a reconductory need that we identify in a twenty-year study is identified as a gap doesn't mean that it's not going to be addressed, right? And what it means is we're just trying to understand, okay, these are the, this is the natural evolution of the system, right? And we kind of see those reconductoring things as highly likely to occur, relatively easy and relatively cost-effective. What are the other things, right, that are less likely to occur, maybe more difficult, but are just as critical and needed to the system? And I I I think that's what SITA is trying to identify, plus all the stuff that Maury said. So just because it's not, it it is a gap, that that's not actually the wrong answer from the utility's perspective. If they had, you know, uh, gold-plated the system and already built reconductoring projects for twenty years, we also probably wouldn't be happy, right? That 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 wouldn't make sense to do, right? So it's it's just because they're not there yet, doesn't mean they're not going to be.
No, I think that's really helpful. And I think the one thing I'll just flag and we'll probably include in our comments is just like if there, if when you look at that project, there is something else that's ma- meaning that is not getting over that the finish line. That's where I see SITA being helpful and partnering with the utility could be the way to get that project over the line. But I'll stop there. Thanks for that answer. And then Kathy, do you mind if I ask my last question?
Yep, go ahead.
Um, this one should be quick and Keegan, I think it's mainly for you. I totally agree with some of the other commenters focus on transmission benefits being um, a piece. Like it could be a piece of that project ranking um, criteria. Um, and my question is, I know for some of those interstate projects, there was some congestion relief benefits identified. I know that this would not have benefits study, but I'm wondering if there are other production cost savings data on these projects that we just didn't see in the study. That just kind of wasn't important to put into study, but we might be able to use for this stage of the project prioritization. Um, hope that question is clear and easy to answer.
Yeah, the the answer is I I do think some of that information exists and at least some of the metrics are there. Hey, it changed it by this much. And that's all well and good. Although even referencing just that in isolation kind of goes against the way that we energy strategies think about transmission and its benefits, which would be, you know, we have a path that a production cost savings is it, right? What we are seeing is some of the benefits that Dan mentioned and low diversity, resource diversity, sharing across large areas. A lot of your research points to this thing. That's sometimes ten X the number that you get from fuel dispatch savings, for example. So while on one hand, yeah, it's good, the data is there, can probably point to it. Two, it often grossly understates the savings and maybe therefore, you know, doesn't actually tell the whole picture and can be misleading. So.
I I totally agree. I just feel like it's it's about making that comprehensive business case for the project. And um, I just was wondering, um, thanks for that answer and I'll pass it back to you, Kathy. Thank you.
Thanks, Tyler. Ken, thank you for your patience. And I see two more hands, Jacob and Doug, and also a couple coming into chat. So uh, we will try to get to everybody here before we wrap up. Ken?
So Ken Wilson, representing Colorado Storage and Solar Association, a couple of quick comments. Um, I think based on some of the questions from the board and and others that this set of priorities is great for coast, for SITA originated projects. You may need a secondary set of scoring priorities when a merchant developer comes to you with an idea for a project. I think that would address some of the concerns that we've heard uh, in the last hour or so. Um, and following on that theme, I think that the highest priority for SITA is to get a good project that a merchant wants to partner with so that you can solidify your funding. I think, you know, all of this is well and good, but if SITA can't maintain maintain itself with funding, all of this is, you know, moot. So I think that's really the the biggest thing is to find a merchant developer who will partner with SITA on one of these projects or an idea of their own. And I hope SITA will be very open to projects that are not in the study that accomplish all of your goals, but, you know, are different and brought forward by a developer who wants to do something. So I think that's um, something you really should think about. Lastly, um, and this Maury mentioned this, I think it's very important for SITA to take on projects that uh, won't be developed otherwise. For example, areas that are difficult to get to, like the San Luis Valley. I think this is a great role for SITA and I hope you can succeed on that. And I think those projects should score very high in your priority list. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ken. We appreciate the input. I'm going to keep moving here. Jacob?
Hi, yes, can you hear me? Wonderful. Yes, thank you, Maury, Keegan and the team for putting this presentation together. It's been really helpful. My comment slash question has to deal with, most of the time, you know, a single transmission project in isolation can be constrained due to um, you know, limits on the system, either upstream or downstream. Has SITA had any conversation about how far out from the single project they'll go to help address those constraints or whether or not they would be willing to partner with the utility, say, okay, we'll tackle this line, but we have an expectation that you guys will beef up the system in other areas to help fully utilize the benefits of this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacob. So how far out will SITA consider uh, the constraints, the transmission constraints and potentially working with a utility? Keegan, that sounds like maybe that might be for you?
Sure. I think the answer, Jacob, is is it's, it would really depend. Um, you know, there could be, for example, if the utility in question is a partner, you know, agreed uh, plan a service that includes upgrades on adjacent systems to maximize the capability of the line. There's also other, you know, non-partnership options like a wire-to-wire interconnection request, which, you know, allows one line to connect into a system and looks at any downstream upgrades and provides a mechanism for somebody to fund and construct those. So there's a lot of different ways that that could be addressed. And I think that would happen, you know, further down the line um, as the project goes forward. Uh, that's that's where we typically see those those things come up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jacob. And I'm going to take a quick question from the chat. I think this is a fairly quick clarification. Uh, we have a question on uh, the fourth statutory factor uh, in the ranking, the efficient use of transmission assets and alternatives on the existing rights of way. So will that consider road rights of way, linear features in addition to just transmission rights of way? Or are we talking specifically utility infrastructure?
Any existing right of way, right? The issue here is is whether or not we're minimizing impacts to property owners.
So any any brownfield where there's a right of way in district. Okay, thank you. Um, Doug and Ron, I also see your hand back up, so I'm just conscious of time here, so we get to everybody. Doug, I'll go ahead and invite you to ask your question.
Uh, thank you and uh, great work, Maury and company. Uh, so glad to see what you're doing and what you do here. Uh, we're watching across the West, uh, and so it it really, your importance is is beyond your border. Um, the first question I think is easy and the the second one is a concern. But, you know, in the in the factors, there there seems in the ranking, it seems uh, I that there's going to be some difficulty in doing the nuance. And I'm presuming this is why you have to have some board discretion, but let me give an example. So let's say for your statutory factors in in the second phase under like clean energy. And let's say you have three projects to get that get a three. But one of those projects has access to three or four times more megawatts of of wind solar storage. And but they, all three projects get a three, but one is clearly significantly more powerful. Where do you have the discretion to be able to recognize that in your project selection process? And that's just one example for clean energy, but I'm sure it could show up in many other examples.
Keegan, perhaps if if there's a higher.
So I I I think it's really important to understand, you know, along the lines that I think what what Ken Wilson was talking about here, right? I I view this two-stage filtering and prioritization process as a way for SITA to identify projects that it wants to explore partnerships with. It's a way to signal to people that we're interested in partnerships. Hopefully we'll get some people calling us and and expressing some interest. And this is really just the very start of the due diligence process, right? Once we identify some partners that can help us with funding, we can get into these deeper questions about doing more complex benefit cost studies, considering uh, you know, uh, congestion further down the line, possibly partnering with um, transmission authorities in neighboring states to make sure that they're working on those efforts while we're working on our efforts in Colorado to get the, to get all of the the factors in play. This is really just the very beginning of justifying the selection of a project. This is, we're not going to stand solely on this scoring and ranking to justify project selection. Project selection, this is shortlist selection. So this is something I've been really clear with Keegan and Tom and Kathy and Steve about. This is shortlist selection. Project selection comes much further down the road after an awful lot of due diligence is done and we dive deeper into these projects. So keep that in mind. This isn't project selection. This is shortlist selection. There's a difference.
Yeah, good distinction. Thanks, Maury. And the the last is more of a comment because I wouldn't want you to have to answer this as a question. But I I do see when I'm looking at the factors uh, and that the additional factors, when you look at number nine, the policy politics and a sub-bullet there is known political barriers or active local opposition. My concern is that you can have some uh, people that have disproportionate influence largely based on money. And so I, and that could have a profound effect on affecting viability, even if the project otherwise is the best that could be. So I don't want you to have to answer that. I just, I just wish you Godspeed.
Thank you, Doug. And then I'll turn to Ron to round us out. And I would like to address a couple comments that are coming in the chat as well, and then we'll wrap up. Ron?
Yeah, thank you. And thanks for all the comments. Very helpful, get other people's thinking in here and, and expand our understanding. One thing that I don't think has been, has been featured much is, you know, sort of a, attack the notion that, that a project for CETA has to be a facility. Well, maybe it's a financing. Maybe, maybe the highest and best use of CETA is bringing low-cost financing to a lot of projects that are developed by others. So I, I don't want to leave out our fundamental, one of our fundamental strengths, which is the ability to tap the municipal bond market. If we're just focused on, on steel and wires, let's, let's focus on the money and make the projects come out affordable. As Leah said, that's, you know, the, the great residential ratepayer class is getting tired of paying more for their utility bill. And we need to, we need to use that as an advantage to bring low-cost financing to these projects. Because, you know, their costs are, are pretty much determined by the, the cost of the money that's in them, so.
Ron, you know, you know, I agree with you on the public financing piece of this. I think that's an important tool that CETA has. I would point you to the definition of a project in our enabling statute. The definition of a project is anything we want to finance. But, but I think we could work around that. So but I'm, I'm all for exploring the use of revenue bonding authority and using it to partially help buy down the costs of, of projects and partnering with people to do that.
Yeah, I think, if, if the PUC starts asking the question, you know, is this project that we're supposed to give a certificate to financed at the lowest cost possible? Then, you know, we'll be in business.
Thank you, Ron. Okay, I'm going to turn to the chat. There's been an earlier question, and this is going to factor number nine in the stage two, the policy, political, and institutional support. What about environmental justice considerations? Where are they explicitly acknowledged? And what about the use of maybe an enviro screen or some other way to flag for energy justice burden?
Alls I can say on that one, Kathy, is, is that maybe that's something that the team ought to take back and, and talk about and see if we have that information available at this stage or not. And if we do, then maybe think about including it in the, in the criteria, in the factors. If we don't, then maybe that's something that we have to take up further down the road in the due diligence process. But I, I, I understand the point.
Good, thank you. Okay, so we will take that under consideration. Thank you for bringing that up. I think, I see no further hands. And I think we have captured just about everything in the chat in, in one way or another. So Matt, if I could ask you to pull up the slides? And unless Keegan or Maury, you have anything else to add? I'll go ahead and just reiterate some dates here. So we are asking for written comments from folks by April 3rd. Send to my colleague Matt Jones here, who's running the slides for us. We will emphasize, we do not need the history or the background of what brought us here. Just very to the point, please. We are looking for, do any of these factors cause you concern? Is there anything that we missed? So give us, give us what you got, what you think of, of what we have presented today, and give us that, that critique so we have a stronger framework. Then second date, April 17th, the CETA board meeting. We will bring this back to the CETA board to consider the framework here, the methodology. So just as sort of a, a check to make sure as we go into the technical analysis that we'll ask energy strategy, energy strategies to do, that they are cranking it through the proper framework. And then in the May and June timeframe, we will come back with a second study session, share the results of the assessment and this, these metrics, the scorecards that we're, we're talking through so you can see where the different projects landed. We did have almost 50 projects that are on the list right now, coming out of the 2024 study. So all of that will be results that we will share with you. And with that, I will say thank you to Keegan and Maury. Really appreciate you fielding questions. Steve, thank you for facilitating for us. And we look forward to reading your comments after April 3rd. Thanks for joining us.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you so much. Team, thanks so much for all your work.